...order this special meeting of the council and the city of Cascade Locks. Those who are willing and able will now stand and face the flag while we honor America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kathy will now call the poll.
Councilmember Holmstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Holmstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Lanning?
Here.
Councilmember Rulich?
Here.
Councilmember Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Crandlett?
Here.
Mayor Masters?
Yes, thank you Kathy. First of all, I just want to thank you everyone for being here. We appreciate our business groups and citizens have chosen to join us tonight. You guys are all an important part of our decision-making process and while there's no specific council action on the agenda tonight, we are going to be hearing some really intriguing proposals about developments in our downtown and just general economic development in our town. So, we'll begin the decision-making process although we won't take full-on action tonight. So, if there's any citizens that would like to address the council tonight about the 505-1 development, we do, we have reserved a spot on the agenda for you to share after we've heard the presentations tonight. So, if you'd like to do that, go ahead and sign up on the clipboard and I'll call you in order that you sign up. So, that'll take us to the next item on the agenda which is additions or amendments. And Paul, you're our custodian of the agenda, so I'll just offer you the opportunity to suggest the changes that you'd like to see.
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. And then I'll turn it to the council. If anyone sees something they'd like to see changed on the agenda, now would be time to suggest that. Seeing none, I also do not have any, we'll stick with our existing agenda. And the third item is an overview of the 505-1-up development project and potential long-term solutions. It's called 505-1-up because that's the address, some people know it as the old fire hall and now it's known as 505-1-up. Paul's going to give us an overview of a staff report that was prepared on our dusts tonight, and then we'll move into our presentations. Paul, thank you.
Thank you Mayor, members of the council. In the staff report, what I attempted to do is lay out for you the fact that you're going to be hearing about four specific proposals that came in as a result of our seeking responses from developers and other businesses. The four include the Thunder Island Brewery, the McCadden Farms Broker Services idea, Columbia Property Group Cedar Architects Broker Development Concept, and then the Sandy River Boat Works. I understand that neither the Columbia Property Group, Cedar Architects' proposal, or Sandy River Boat Works will have anybody here tonight to speak to you. And for the Sandy River Boat Works, I did place a document at your desk. So, this is the PowerPoint presentation that Chris would have given. This is an ongoing process that you initiated a few months ago when you selected to go the development route for the fire station as opposed to buying another appraisal. So, and so that after you made that decision, we then met with developers and brokers at the old fire hall or 505-1-up tour that answered questions and then we provided to each of the proposers a copy of the original architects' report for the condition of the building and other documents so that people would know what size, what are the conditions of that. So, tonight what we're going to be asking you to do is give us some direction so we can keep this moving along. I think the options that you have are to hear the presentations and do nothing. It doesn't mean you wouldn't do something somewhere in the future. Second would be to hear the presentation, then direct that one of the options be pursued. Third would be to hire a broker to sell the property and don't entertain any of the development options or ideas. Fourth would be to enter into an IGA with Port of Cascade Locks and let the port handle the development and coordination of any project or business that would be initiated there. And then fifth would be to select whatever direction that you would like to go. When we get down to, after you hear all the presentations, what I'm recommending you do is to enter into a comprehensive IGA with the Port of Cascade Locks and then direct at the port, work with the interested parties to come up with some use that will enable or facilitate a quicker new businesses in there and improvements of the facility. So, that's kind of where we see this moving. That doesn't mean that the council has to adopt those recommendations. You clearly can go any direction that you would like.
Okay. Before we start the presentations, just any clarification about that overview? Okay. So, we'll move now to our presentation from the Thunder Island Brewery.
You want me to do it over here?
Yes, you sit right here. Have you distributed your updated capital table?
I can have those out if you'd like.
So, Thunder Island has a revised concept that they'll distribute now to you. This is different than the one you had in your package.
Thanks. Thank you. Well, my name is David Lips. I'm a part of Thunder Island.
You can sit off to the side if you want to get the bat in your eyes.
Oh, yeah. I'd like to thank you guys for all coming out. Thank you guys for, the audience for coming and thanks Paul and Mayor for having me here. I'm going to start by telling you just a little bit about Thunder Island Brewing Company. It's a partnership between Dan Heinz and Lee Dittlips. I'm one of ten kids. I grew up in the Bay Area, went to Bethany University, done a lot of traveling.
Mayor, can you shut the mics down? Thanks.
I work for a bike tour company in Portland, Oregon. It's one of the most successful tour companies in the state of Oregon. I've also done the Transamerica Bike Group, bike ride from Portland to Virginia. A few more. Dan, he's one of eight kids, grew up in Sandy. He's working on his degree in community development and he's taught backpacking and hiking in Santa Cruz and in McCall. A few years ago, we started out a small brewery in our basement. This is actually really, really starting out nitty-gritty using just some pots and some burners. We started what we call a CSD, Community Support Brewery. A bunch of friends would give us donations once a month and we'd make beer and turn the gift back to them. We did that for a couple of years. We also had a bike repair shop in my garage and people would come by and we'd fix their bike and give them a little steer to the road. Eventually, we grew. We made this three-tiered brewing system which has a lot more capabilities than those pots in the basement. Well, about eight months ago, we decided to sit down and kind of map out what it would take to follow our passion for brewing. Basically, what we came up with is we, I would go in and turn in a brewery ball. Dan would search in the local area for a destination for us. City of Portland has a lot of great amenities with the hops being in the region, great brewery culture. Now, the city itself is kind of unappealing for a lot of breweries. It takes probably three or four times the capital to get into the city of Portland than it would to come outside of the city. And we wrote down our, kind of our ethos of what we are about and who we are. We both have a huge focus on community, history and culture. Biking and hiking, both of us have been doing that for years and are actively involved with it. Quality beer, of course, is highly important to us and sustainability would be the foundation of our business underlying. And Dan and I kind of stumbled across Cascade Locks and instantly we were enthralled with the location. We love the unique geological history, the way that the Table Mountain landslide created the cascade rapids all the way to the creation of the Columbia Gorge itself and the little river itself being the second largest river in America. We love that Lewis and Clark came right through here back in 1805, the historic highway and its history in 1915, developing this world-class scenic highway with top-notch engineering at the time. We love the adventure tourism aspect of the gorge. Dan and I have both taken many trips through the gorge and alas, it's simply breathtaking up here. It's just an excellent location. So, we kind of saw our, both of our ethos of Cascade Locks being the perfect location for who we were with what we were about and promoting community, sustainability, hiking, biking, and the brewing, I think, would be a great fit for the city. Here's kind of the things about the Cascade Locks here. We really fell in love with this building, the fire hall. The building was built by the people of Cascade Locks. Another way of history in there that we love. We love that it already has the big bay doors, the floor drains in it. It's located right next to the Bridge of the Gods, right down the street from it. So, we started to kind of imagine this brewery inside the fire hall and what it would look like. This is a rendering I did in a little sketchup. There's a, we kind of liked the idea of maybe going with a saloon-style look and have, you know, those big bay doors that could open up. We started doing some sample branding for the building, what we think could really create a great destination in the city of, uh, not the city of, Cascade Locks. We love the hiking, the biking, the camping, and we would like to, you know, come out here and really promote the city of Cascade Locks to Portland and Hood River as a great destination to come. We're going along with this mapping theme and really try to, you know, incorporate the fact that you can come out here, you can park your car, you can go for a hike in the mountains, you can come down, spend your money in, you know, the city, go to little art shops or coffee shops or brewery. We really think it's the perfect destination. It's the heart of the Columbia Gorge on the map. And, let's see, we would love to do partnerships with a series of different groups, hopefully one day the Stern Wheeler. We'd love to do Beer Fest on the Stern Wheeler, work with the Northwest Trail Alliance or even PCT. Now, the way that we really see this going and we'd really like to propose the option that the finance and the actual working out of the building, we hope that the city would let the Port of Cascade Locks step in as a developer or a renovator of the building to invest into it, make it a location that is usable for brewery or for production. And we line up as the tenants coming in, creating a great destination in the city, bringing people into the city, creating revenue and sales tax and even, you know, hopefully pulling more businesses then, once people kind of see how great the location is. Now, we haven't given a pricing or, you know, what we can pay for the building right now on paper, but I think if we, if we move forward and we have commitment to our project, Dan and I have talked a little bit about setting up maybe a, you know, we pay interest on the building for three to five years. There's a balloon payment at the end where we have to, you know, turn around and once we're established as a business with certain benchmarks, then we'll go over, go ahead and try to purchase the building from the city. And the city will be financing the building for the whole time. That's the option that we really see is really great for the city, being able to have a business come in, active business promoting the city, drawing people into town. You know, for our business with low, you know, we, all of our capital right now is going to our brewing system itself and the business plan itself. So, our capital itself, we can't spend all this money renovating, purchasing, developing a building when, you know, the actual brewery side of things is, as you can see on paper, it's quite a lot sitting there. But, yeah, we, you know, sort of, we really like the city of Cascade Locks. We like the hiking, we like the biking, and we think this would be a great destination for people to come. And we would love to advertise that to people in Portland and the surrounding area.
Any questions, David?
Mayor?
What do you see as the challenges that you guys are gonna, what are the obstacles and challenges that you're gonna run into right off the bat or are there?
Well, to be, to be honest, one big challenge we've had so far is trying to work out the building. You know, we've done a lot of work so far. We've put in, you know, months of work focusing on Cascade Locks, focusing on this building as something that could happen and really imagining it and sketching it up as an idea. And, but without any commitment, you know, or any finalization of the actual building, we could end up putting months and months of work in and end up with nothing. And, you know, that's kind of been the first hurdle that we've kind of unexpectedly hit. We kind of were ready and trying to line up financing and everything two months ago and then realizing, wait, if this gets pulled out of underneath us and we've lined up financing, you gotta figure out the building before we figure out the business plan. But, the brewing side and the business side of things, we think is pretty sound and we think the location in of itself does a lot of the sound for us. You know, we see so many things here that are great for business to come into with all the adventure tourism, the road being there and, you know, the highway with eight million people passing by a year. You know, it's kind of a no-brainer for a business to come in and kind of draw in the, you know, the money and draw an attraction, you know.
Tom?
I guess my question is, is from the money side of it. Because being able to get the money, you need a half million dollars to get this thing going here. To me, that's the important side more than, I mean, the building is valuable, but from our side of it, well, we have to know that it doesn't, it doesn't work well for us to head down the road where you're gonna have a hard time getting the money. So, knowing that you got, that you're solid there without.
Yeah, so, on our paper there, we put that it's about a half a million dollars basically for the whole project in of itself. Now, some of those numbers on there could be two or three-year-long investments overall. For example, the brewing system alone is, you know, $250,000. Well, if we go with a smaller brewing system for the first three years and then upgrade to that full-size, you know, we can't. But we have right now about a quarter of that first half lined up and that's surely enough to get you off the ground with a little bit of work from a few different angles. So, the, you know, that side of things, we've been, we've definitely been working on it. We definitely have things lined up, but without, you know, it's one of those things, without the actual building, you know, you can only go so far down that road, you know, because it could all be a fruitless project.
If you're not relying totally on a bank to back you on, then you've got some other bank, other backers that you can rely on, the belief in what you got going here and it'll help.
I think my primary concern would be the structure of the IGA with the port and how that would work if the port's going to invest in the building. How is, how is that all going to structure and how is that going to work over a period of time for the city? Because the city still has to be concerned about being able to see revenue out of this at some point and be able to have a predictable end as Tom put it, you know, being, know that this is going to be able to be successful and a lot of that has to do with how it's, how the financing and the renovation is structured and then how much of that goes, comes back to the city or what does that do to the city's overall end value?
Well, if the, if the port ends up partnering in and doing the renovations on the building, that's already a lot of, you know, a lot of money that the city doesn't have to put upfront or doesn't lose. And having a business lined up already, you know, you can kind of see that, well, if the renovations and the upgrades to the building are being done, at least, you know, if our business does not succeed down the road, you have this nice building that will be very marketable.
Yeah, we had a developer here last week, Robert Ball, and he was saying the value of the building minus the value of the renovations, basically, you know, so we have to be able to look at that and see if we put, if the port puts too much into renovation and brings the building down to kind of like net zero as far as what our value was to it, then obviously that ends up not working that well for the city. So, but light the vision and, you know, we just have to look at how all the numbers pencil out and what it ends up looking as far as bottom line for the city. But, love the idea of the development and the plan that you guys have, what if we can put it together and whether the numbers all work?
Five years down the road though, if, you know, we're able to move in and start promoting the area, there's possible developments next to us that might come in. And that's, that's a constant stream of revenue that's smart to be looking at and that's, that's, you know, people coming out to the city. So, there's kind of this long-term goal for the city is getting the downtown revitalization started. And there needs to be an anchor business that moves in, you know, is going forward and doing the effort and promoting the city and promoting the destination.
Yes, I'm with you there.
Jeff?
Thank you for your presentation and your handouts. It varies, looks very nice and I appreciated it. The question I have for you, and it's more a little bit along the lines, it goes back to, I believe it was PRI Illinois, there was a grain elevator that went out of business because a horrific storm came through, tornado went through and the owner, his wife and the children went to the banker and asked for money and they, the banker said, "What can you do to secure this loan for us to rebuild your grain elevator?" And all he came up with is, my wife, me and my kids, is to do that. The banker on a leap of faith gave him that money to do that. That gentleman was Jim Ralston of Ralston Purina and built a multi-billion dollar corporation throughout the world. Who are your believers and your backers that say, "We believe in you and we're gonna back you and finance you in this"? Who's that and how have you sold that product to them? Because you're presenting it to us, but who are these people that you say have lined up? That's, that's the selling point for me.
So, partially from family investment. My dad is a very successful businessman in the Bay Area, running a small cap, or well, now medium-cap S and P 500 company. And he's seen the business plan and sees the value of the project. Another road that we also are looking down is, we see as a great road for line-up investment is using Kickstarter website to get small businesses off the ground, up and running. And the way that it works is we go online and create a video telling people about our project. And using social media, you can get small donations from people for X amount of dollars with incentives for the people to donate to the project. So, someone donates a hundred dollars, they get a t-shirt and a pint of beer. Someone donates five hundred dollars, they get to come out to the VIP, open you there, whatnot. We're looking for, that breweries in the past have done thirty to sixty thousand dollars of fundraising to that. And that would not only be a great seed investment for the company, but also it would be great advertising off the ground. And then if we can take a successful Kickstarter project, turn around and go to an investment bank with X amount of capital plus the Kickstarter, you know, it's, it's a good incentive then for development in the project, further development. So, we, you know, once again, the, you know, we'd like to go those extra steps now and start really selling the project now, but, you know, there's only so much you can do. You can't get a Kickstarter fund for a building you don't have.
Thank you. Tom?
How long do you say you've been brewing here?
So, Dan's been brewing for about six years. I, I've been brewing for about two and a half, three now, that's all we've been brewing together. I just spent six months in New Zealand brewing for a brewery over there, doing everything at the brewery from cleaning, brewing, writing recipes, managing the bar, helping with the PR and the advertising. I was kind of just there, all around everything.
Brandon?
Value of the building, we're kind of broaching around that, but are you anticipating determining that as you go into the project or after, or after three to five years?
Yeah, there's, we'd like to kind of come up with a price before, definitely before we go in, but it's one of those things that right now, it's, there's a lot of unknowns in the equation with the, you know, how much will renovations cost? Is the building severe damage or something? You know, one of these numbers, there are a lot of unknowns to me and I know there's been, a lot of times the 150,000 mark has been really thrown around there. But then also getting it up to code as a 150,000, you know, so it's, I, you know, I, we haven't got to the table yet, started those first numbers, but we would, yeah, ideally we'd work all that out for three to five years.
Dale?
I did do a nice presentation. I, do you know why we're trying to make some kind of deal on the old fire hall?
Yeah.
That's to pay off a loan.
Yeah.
And financing over a long period of time doesn't help us do that. We have a limited timeframe that we're supposed to complete paying that off. And, so for one.
And the other thing is, you know, the city's not in the real estate business and they're not in the finance business. And so, my own bias is looking for an outright sale by some method or manner and get some money into the city to help offset some of our liabilities. I, I wish there was a way we could help pursue this particular venture, but for the assets we're talking about, myself, I don't see it.
Tom?
Well, for Paul here, we took the total property and we split it in half now into two pieces. Are we looking at it's all, is it all going back into one piece again on all of these proposals or is this, are we looking at the whole thing instead of the two pieces? Or is this, are we looking at the whole thing instead of the two pieces?
Well, I think you're looking at two pieces. How those might link together if there were negotiations for, around a certain business approach. I think that's yet to be determined.
Okay, so when we're looking at, when we're looking at the brewery, it could have all the building on it? Or it could have that and parking lot which works then?
Yes.
Okay, so all, all of that's possible, okay.
So what I like here is that here's a person and a partnership and an idea put together by people who are passionate about the things that make Cascade Locks great. Okay, and well, those of us who, who attended the joint meeting with the port to hear from the SLA La Plante group, what we heard was we need people who are passionate about trails, okay? Just like we need people who are passionate about sailing, which is starting up soon. And, and, and here's, here's a chance, like, like what Jeff was talking about, his friends from Illinois. Here's a chance for us to take a leap of faith on people who are passionate about exactly what it is that makes Cascade Locks great. It's the hiking, outdoor recreation, and, and my gosh, throw in a, a nice frosty brew. And, you know, we're going to get people coming here. You've got to believe in this, just like the people who are presenting this proposal to us. So, so to me, I, I look at this as just a tremendous opportunity to bring more people who are passionate about what makes this place great. And at the same time, help facilitate economic development in our downtown corridor. So I, you know, I, I think we'd be silly to just reject this out of hand. I, I think this, we, we need to explore this. We need to go down this road and, and take a look at, you know, at the passion that's behind it and, and, and how it captures the passion of other people who are going to be coming to town and promoting the further economic development. So, so having said that though, I'm looking at page, right over here, back here, page twenty-nine. Your projected cash flow. You're, you're projecting that for a couple of months, there's no rent, but then you're paying rent for fifteen hundred dollars. So like Gail's saying, that's not, that's not a purchase. That doesn't really help the city with what, what had been the goal for this property for the last five years or so, since we took out the loan for, for our new firehouse. So other than it would, it would bring down, you know, if we were to be able to take that money in as a, again, we're not in the real estate business, but if we did take that, that rent money in, it would bring down the payments we're currently making on our loans by, by what you're proposing is fifteen hundred dollars. So, so I guess the question that, and maybe you don't have the answers here, but I think the question that, that we're going to have to grapple with is in this, this proposed relationship with the port, doing developing, renovation to the building if necessary and so on, how, you know, how, what, what impact is that going to be on the amount of this rent that the city receives? So I, I don't know what the proposal is there. I don't know if you've gotten that far with the port, but I'd be interested in hearing it.
Yeah, so first that, that number, we, we put it in there really with no, we had no idea of the parameters of the situation. So that, first that fifteen hundred is adjustable over time or whatnot. You know, we, we, we would be interested if the city would allow us to maybe doing a sloping payment where over time, the amount we pay increases with that balloon payment. You know, that we pay, or we find financing for the business to purchase the building after three to five years. That's kind of what we would look for an agreement with you. Also, we would be having to work with the port, paying the port over time for the renovations that they've done on the building. So I think we're kind of faced with two hurdles there that we need to, I guess, work out the details. A lot of this stuff is, you know, we, we'd like to sit down at the table, you know, seriously and, and have all the parties come together and kind of say, what works for you? What works for you? This is what we can do. And it's, it's hard to do that, you know, from where we were standing, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And we are, you know, trying to talk to council members right now and talk to the council for the, for Cascade Locks to, to really finalize their commitment to the project.
So let me ask you this then, would you be open to the concept of a developer, whether it be the port or some other developer, purchasing a property from the city? So that we get out of the real estate business and then identifying as part of that purchase agreement that you're going to be the anchor tenant for the building and the other development they have in mind?
Yeah, we would, we would entertain that idea or, you know, go down that road.
Because it seems like that's a bit, that's a bit cleaner from our standpoint of, they're juggling a couple of different levels, you've got obligations to the port and the, and the city as a landlord. It'd be a lot easier for us to say, let a developer take over. And, you know, and here, oh, by the way, here's, here's a tenant that wants to be here, that's passionate about being here, that's committed to the, to the development of the whole community. You know, that, from my understanding, talking with developers, that's, that is exactly what they're looking for. When they, you know, they're, what do they, what do they say that it's, you know, development's simple? You have to, you have to, you know, you have to take in more than it's going out, right? So if you've got a tenant who's willing, who's projected X amount, then, then the developer can run the numbers and say, yeah, it works.
Yeah, we really like the idea of working with a port as kind of their stand-in, as the development on the building, because then that's, is, they have vested interest in the project as develop, you know, helping develop the downtown, not as, as much huge financial returns, which if you go kind of the development route of, you know, finding someone in Portland to come out, it's a lot of money that's leaving the city of Cascade Locks going to Portland to pay for the renovations. And really, we see the, the, you know, the port as having the potential to help with the development process in a way that benefits them and it benefits the city and it benefits us, just the three parties at the table.
Thanks. Other questions or comments before we move on to our next presentation? Thanks David.
Thanks.
Tom, ready to introduce our next presenter from McAdam Forbes?
Right, next we have Tyler Dean with McAdam Forbes Broker Services. He has submitted a proposal that is primarily a broker, sell your property kind of a role along with some comparables. So Tyler, I'll give you a quick call.
My name is Tyler Dean. I specialize in commercial real estate brokerage with a company called McAdam Forbes. Local commercial real estate brokerage firm based out of Portland. We're a smaller boutique firm, we have about twenty different brokers, ranging in age, I'll probably be younger, twenty-eight, I'm a guy who's going to sixty-five, seventy. So a lot of experience around Portland and tertiary markets, Cascade Locks, a lot of selling and leasing of commercial property. So essentially that's where I come in. I sell and lease commercial property. To that end, you know, part of my role and what Paul had asked me to do is come out and take a look at the property at five oh five, put together a marketing proposal and my general thoughts of keeping in mind what the objective is here, what the best course of action would be. We initially talked, and I think it was conversations that were had around here about, you know, maybe going out and getting another appraisal on the property and getting an idea of, you know, what it's worth today. Paul and I first spoke, you know, my initial thought was, you know, going out and getting another appraisal might not be the best use of another two thousand dollars of the city's money. So what I did is I pulled comparables to the extent that they're available. There's not a lot of commercial property selling right down, pull through it right down the street. So you have to stretch a little bit, but take into account a lot of different factors and try to figure out maybe what did this thing do work? And more importantly, what could it be, what am I used to it? Obtain what, would it attract? Would it be a brewery? So I took that, put it all together, you know, a very short marketing proposal, outlined my initial thoughts of, of values, approach to value. Also development, I'm not a developer, but I've worked with a lot of developers and I have a little bit of an understanding of how they look at things Once I was in Gail to put this together, just very quickly, commercial real estate trades on four different markets, basically. Sell to an owner user, somebody that's going to buy, not buy the property that I want out of you, you can take. You can sell it to an investor, sell it to a developer, or you can lease it. As I understand the objective, it is to take the proceeds from the property and pay off the debt, the new firehouse. So the leasing market at first glance doesn't necessarily play into it, but when you look back at potential buyers for the property, might be an investor or developer, they're looking for an income stream. So when we have somebody interested early on that wants to lease the property, certainly that makes something that we, we can look at and maybe put them together with the investor, developer, and then we might have something. Maybe on its own, it doesn't fulfill the objective of what we're trying to do, but my job as a commercial real estate broker is not to sell the property, but to, you know, connect the players. So I mean, played a lot of baseball in my day and orchestrated teams and worked well with people. So, you know, one, I think finding a tenant could be an avenue to go down. Finding an architect that can get us a rendering of what this could be if we were to redevelop it, could be another avenue to go down and just getting out there and finding some interest and really promoting the property for what it is and what it could be. So after viewing the property, I think there's a variety of different avenues to, to take and for me to sit up here and say, no, this is the approach and this is the one way to do things. I think that the market is going to dictate what ends up happening with this. So for my, my role in this, the way I see it is I would work on behalf of the city and fulfill your objective the best I can. And that would be by promoting the property, qualifying the different people that are interested and figuring out the best way to go, which road to go down. So that could be finding, like you said, could be finding a tenant, putting them in place with a developer that has some interest and to take it from there. Problem that I see with that would be that the tenant has to have some creditworthiness, has to have some history, and there's very few developers out there that will start spending, you know, I don't know how much it would take, but, you know, maybe a hundred, maybe two hundred thousand dollars to put into a building with, with a startup company. So that is something that they would certainly look at unless the developer, the investor had some sort of tie to the entity that was there. So, and that does happen, you know, there's somebody that's loosely affiliated that really believes in the business. And then they look at the worst-case scenario, okay, say this company doesn't end up being here two, three years down the road. We have substantial improvements that have lasting value here. And whether that be a brewery, a boat operation, you know, that gets you down the road to the next step, but you've got to find somebody that will want to take a bit of a flyer there to that end. I took a look just briefly, there's different approaches, valuing the property. These are the same approaches that a grazer would take from the income approach. I assume that somebody would say what we call nine dollars a square foot, triple that. Essentially what that means is that's an annual basis. Somebody on a monthly basis, just to break it down, would pay roughly sixteen hundred dollars a month or so in rent. That's net of the taxes. They would also pay the taxes and insurance on the property and all that. And that would be the income stream for somebody looking to buy it as an investment. So if somebody came in and paid that sixteen hundred dollars a month for the property, you back out a five percent kind of vacancy reserve and give them an eight and a half percent return values to the property as it sits at two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars roughly. But in order to get there, and to get somebody up and running in that property, there's going to take ten improvement months. There's going to have to be money spent out of pocket to do size and look upgrades. I don't know if that's necessary, but there would be certain things that needed to be done to get an operation in there depending on what it is up and running. So it's one way of looking at it. We can play with the numbers all day long. It'll give us a, a different value, but it comes in in that range for a very reasonable amount of number. There's a big question mark though, again, is how much money does that investor, that buyer, is going to come take the property off your hands and work with the tenant? How much do they have to spend to get there? From a comparison approach, value typically rises. And that would be that of other properties that are sold, pulled from other tertiary markets, comparable properties. It's not like there was seven other old firehouses in, in smaller towns across the area that you can pull a price per square foot value on. But I feel fairly comfortable in, in a range of, you know, seventy to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's on the, on the higher end of a range for somebody that really had a business that could go in there and operate and use the area very well. Really, at the end of the day, what buyers are going to look at is how much money can they make out of it? Can they justify paying that amount along with how much money they have to put into the building to make it functional for their use? So there are a lot of different factors and that's why I say ultimately the, the market's going to dictate the price point and what you guys are going to be able to achieve out of the property. But so it's not, I don't feel it's my role to sit up here and tell you exactly how everything's going to play out, but what I do is to illustrate things and qualify and, and help you make the best decision given your objective, potential uses. And you guys know as well as I do that it's a pretty unique property, pretty cool property, a lot of potential. I walk away from it, I like what I see and I think that it could be a variety of different things. So I think promoting what it could be is what, what I would do. It's something that probably comes in, you're selling an idea more than you are, you know, a concrete block building. Like David mentioned, he's, he's a visionary and sees what it could be already, but there's a lot of buyers out there that don't. So in order to sell that idea, maybe there is an architectural rendering that can say, you know, here's what it could be. It doesn't necessarily end up being that, but, you know, if we have something to go along those lines, it might be worth the money to spend, excuse me, to do that and help paint a picture, I think. So from a marketing perspective, we've developed marketing material, posted to all our websites. We're typical real estate brokers to that end. What's not typical, I tend to make quite a few phone calls trying to connect dots and get the right people in place for the right project. And I think we can do that here, it's just, you know, I can't tell you what it'll sell at, but, and what timeframe, has a lot to do with the motivation. If you want to get it sold in the next six months, it can prove to be difficult. It's not something that I see, you know, happening overnight, but it's something that I think we develop over time. And we have a little bit of a head start with some preliminary interest from the tenant side. And we would exhaust that, I think that'd be the first step, is to take the burden in and exhaust that and see if we can't make a deal out of that. And then from there, getting signs up on the property, promote it on the, on all the marketing sites and generate a little buzz around it. And I think long-term, what I see is, as was mentioned earlier, a start to a downtown core, a revitalized core. But maybe it does have a brewery or some sort of, you know, cool. life to the area to where, you know, something takes off and starts to do very well and then there's a lot of complimentary uses and a little bit of land next to where to do that with. So, you know, I like the potential, I like the opportunity and I guess I'll take your questions.
Yeah.
We're going to have potential value. Are we talking about the one piece of property or both pieces of property?
What I put the, my, I can speak for what I put the value on was the, the building itself, which is roughly twenty-one, twenty-two hundred square feet or so and the land that goes with it. And that was roughly, I guesstimated about half an acre. I'm not sure what land goes with the building and what's owned by the port next door, but I didn't take into consideration that the land to the west is owned by the port.
So there's also, there's also some land, a separate flat to the east between the five oh five one of my building and the post office. And I think since those are separate flats now, I think that's what, we've had a couple of questions about that. Are you including the parking lot and the overlook plaza or are you including just the property that goes with it?
I included the property and about a half an acre I didn't take into account anything on that. Do you guys know off the top of your head what it is?
Actually, the, that property with the parking lot is about half an acre. So that's both, both pieces.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Randy?
You were talking about anchor tenants and I think some of us, when we, we've talked about this before in, in meetings, have seen the sign up in Sandy that they were offering free land for a brew pub.
Sure.
How, how does that work for them? Do you have an idea?
I don't know directly, but I can imagine probably not as well as it would here. If you have a destination, you know, area that's pretty desirable to be in for somebody like that and that makes it, I don't think you need to give them away land in order to obtain a tenant. I think there's some value in the existence of real estate, but I don't imagine, I don't know, I'm not familiar with what it is. It's a little different market.
Well, I think they were looking for an anchor tenant and I'm sure there were factors that there was going to be some future growth and, and then, you know, how, how do they rationalize the free land? I would assume that the other parcels would be worth a whole lot more if you had.
Right. Well, it goes back, you need something to get it off the ground. It's very similar here. We need an income stream. There's no doubt about it. You're either going to sell it to an owner user, somebody that comes along and says, you know, that building can work for my business, I want to buy the building and I'll occupy it with my business. If that doesn't happen, personally, I think that's the highest and best use of property is to sell it to a user. You'll gain the highest price point out of selling it to somebody that's going to occupy it themselves and operate their own business and sell it around. If you can't do that, you know, the next best thing to be able to do is to have a tenant in hand, ready to go to pay rent to whoever comes and buys it. So I think we need an income stream one way or another, whether it's somebody that's going to come in and purchase it. Other than that, you've got to have somebody that feels that the property's going to generate income as an investor. They're simply purchasing a return on the money they spend. So for them to buy a vacant property, they're going to underwrite how long it takes them to get the tenant, how much they're going to have to spend in improvements to keep the tenant and put the tenant in there, and then they've got to get a return off of that. So if, say they bought it for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, put a hundred thousand into it, they have to be pretty sure they're going to be able to get twenty-five hundred in a month in rent to get their eight percent return. I think, you know, it's going to be pretty far-fetched to get somebody to come in and buy it vacant, speculating if they're going to be able to get the tenant in the income stream and do that within a certain timeframe. So having somebody ready to go to pay rent goes a long ways than pick up the phone and sell the idea to somebody, say, hey, I've got an idea for you. I have a property, very cool property in a very cool area and, you know, here's all that goes along with it, here's the story, and they have somebody ready to pay rent as soon as you're coming to spend the money. First question they're going to ask though is who is it and, you know, are they going to be able to pay the rent for the length of the lease? You've got to be pretty certain about.
So just to continue the discussion about what's happening in Sandy, they kind of already have an anchor tenant, it's Fred Meyer Grocery Store.
Yeah.
There's a couple other side businesses like a Burger King. I think, and then they have what used to be an industrial part with, with earlier. I think there's also a cinema out there. So when it's publicly, I think part, part of the equation there is when you've got publicly owned land, you know, the, the entity, instead of Sandy, isn't, isn't collecting property tax money on that. So they'd like to get that, that land, you know, on the tax rolls so that it can, it can benefit, you know, the overall community through, through property tax. To me, that's the, probably the biggest similarity there is we have a whole stretch of land that's now off the tax rolls that are downtown. So, I mean, I wouldn't want to speak for the port, but it would seem like, you know, the benefit to them would be that if they own a lot, that stretch of property between the, the Best Western and the five oh five Wanapa, and, and then they can get, they can help to get a, a tenant and a destination business started there, then their property becomes a lot more valuable. The benefit to the city would be that that goes on, and, and for that matter, for the county, is that that property then goes back on the tax roll and rather than sitting vacant and the city not collecting, not having businesses, not having economic development, it just benefits the whole community. So I, I mean, I think that's the, that's the comparison there. The difference being that when you have an, an anchor tenant already, it's maybe it's easier just to say, well, we'd like this type of business and target that particular type, whereas we don't have that luxury. Jeff?
Other question? Mark? Yeah, would, would it be advisable to sell the two properties together because, you know, the fire hall, whatever goes in there, there's no parking and so you sort of need one, you know, for the other. I mean, I don't know if that's how you would market it or how.
Absolutely. I mean, just because they're two separate tax lots, as I understand it, I think that you probably will need, depending on what it is, you will need the excess of land in order to fulfill probably, like you said, number one parking requirement. One thing we had talked about when we walked around buildings, potential of doing some, a full redevelopment of the building, whether or not that's scraping into a ground up development there or if the existing structure can support, you know, a second, third story residential above it and then have a group of or something downstairs on the ground floor. Any of those things, even just a ground floor brewery will, will need the parking to go on with that. So, yeah, I think that you go out and you make the offering to the market as wide as you can, you know, and you make it the opportunity for sale or lease, knowing that if you track the quality tenant, it makes it easier to sell and to the effect of the real estate as well, bring the market to the full loss and then probably offer them all as a package. And if somebody came along and said, I really need, you know, this plot of land in the building and to do that operation in there and I probably want to buy it, then you have a piece of land next door that we can, you know, market as well as a complimentary use to it. But I think if you're going out and keeping the gap as wide as you can on the onset, it's probably the best way.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Great presentation.
Thank you. Hey Paul, I understand we don't have our final two presentations, we don't have presenters here other than you, so will you be walking us through that or just relying on the?
I'll, I'll just walk you through it very quickly. The Columbia Property Group is Mark Cedar, who's an architect, and Jim Edwards, who's with Columbia Property Group LLC. They're proposing is basically what Tyler was talking about, and they're, had already been aware of both the brewery and canoe folks. So they were talking about maybe tying those together and then doing some kind of development with those two. What the price would be for the property or lease would yet to be worked out. The last one is the Sandy River Boat Works. This is, this is a proposal that the city had seen a few years ago. So he is talking about a hundred and fifty thousand sales price, twenty thousand down, balance payable monthly at five percent interest with a thirty-year amortization at about six hundred and ninety-eight dollars a month. So what he is proposing is to buy the property on a long-term contract from the city, putting in a boat works. He's going to make canoes, kayaks and small sailing boats and operate out of the old fire hall.
Yeah.
At some point, since the port's been mentioned, can we hear from Chuck on this topic too?
Well, yeah, I think Chuck was planning to, to speak to, but I think that, that gets into the staff recommendations. Yeah, if you look at the staff recommendations, they all, all three of the recommendations involve the port.
Yeah.
So Paul, just to, just to kind of clarify, we just have one letter and the idea is that the Columbia Property Group would like two or more weeks to come back with another proposal. But their proposal seems to be developing the property into something that would accommodate a brewery as well as a boat works. And didn't it also have a couple other ideas? Incorporating the proposed marine park access?
Right.
Offices of the city and/or port?
Yes.
Okay. So it's a, it's a much more global proposal, but we don't have that proposal yet. It's just talking about, they'd like an extra two weeks to bring it to us. Did we have any questions or comments about those last two proposals? Randy?
Yeah, the Sandy River Boat Works. Do we know if they were figuring both parcels?
No, he was just looking at the building and the, the front driveway.
Okay. So not, not the parking lot?
Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, we'll move now to our staff recommendations.
So I, as I said earlier, I think there are a number of options for you. The city does have a five or six year old architect's schematic of the building. There was an analysis done at one time and in talking to that architect, he estimates that the improvements necessary to meet code would be somewhere between a hundred thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand. Some of it is dependent on the kind of use that goes in there. I have talked to the county building official and he's indicated to me that if the, you'd rather see the city have somebody in there paying rent and to meet the code requirements, which would include pulling the back wall back into place and, and doing the seismic upgrades, he would be wanting to go along with maybe a three to five year plan to bring the building up to code requirements. So he doesn't want to see himself as an impediment to any development. So the, when you look at, at the whole array of options that you have, counsel, one of them clearly is McAdam Forbes and contracting with them to be your, your broker and letting them try to sell the property and put some different options together. The other end of that is using the port as the developer and then entering into the IGA and letting them take their resources and expertise to work with potential clients to make, at least the boat works and the brew pub work. The brew pub could go into the fire, the old fire station. The boat works might be able to go somewhere else at other port properties and that would give you those two businesses in town. And I think they relate quite well to the other activities that the port has along the north side of Wanapa Street. And I do know that Chuck is available to sit and talk with you about that and that may be a good time to have that discussion too.
Chuck, would you, would you mind? Should I?
So just maybe want to address Gail's question and the goal for a long time as to liquidate the, the fire hall property and use the resources to pay back the loan for public works electricity. So, and, you know, I don't think I'd be here if you had that proposal, if there was a compelling purchase price that was there, then obviously I think you'd take it and sell the property. I don't, I think if, if there was an investor that was looking to, to pay a substantial amount of money for the property, maybe have a plan, they wouldn't just be doing it on speculation and, and so, but it doesn't appear that you have that. You've got one cash proposal that is essentially a financing over a very long period of time. And then you've got a business plan from the Thunder Island Brewery and then, you know, a couple of kind of straight broker sort of proposals. And I, I, I think, so here's what I think we've been talking about in terms of, of the property. It's, it's a great location. It's, it's a, it's a unique building. It's a historic building. It has, it has a tremendous amount of aesthetic value to it and the location is, like I've mentioned, is just, is phenomenal with the views of the bridge, the views of the river. The port's been working with a number of parties on, on developing the tweak property. We've got an agreement in place with Brigham that they're getting really close to. They've been a year and almost a half working out the financing in terms, so all this stuff takes time. We've got another proposal with a, another entrepreneur that wants to build a small drive-through coffee shop there. We're working through the detail on that. That's starting to materialize. We've got the potential to put a one thousand, two thousand square foot building on, on the other part of the property. We're reserving a piece of it for a potential entrance of the park. Not quite sure yet if it's going to be a vehicle or a pedestrian, but it's still, certainly something we're working through. And so it kind of leaves this, this opportunity there in terms of the, of this building. So, so what, what's the port's role and then the community? And the port has, has been, can be a, a patient investor. We don't require the return on investment that a private developer would. And if you can find a private developer and get them in there, that would be the preferred alternative. But we've, we've had some difficulty in terms of our properties. We haven't had a necessarily building until just recently, but it's going to take time to find the right buyer. It's not going to happen quickly. So, so as looking at all these proposals that you received, the one that really kind of stands out is the Thunder Island Brewery. And it's because of the fact that you've got these two young entrepreneurs who have done an extensive amount of work on this project and they, they have, and they have a lot of capital requirements that don't necessarily include the risk of acquiring a building. So I think the port's role in that could be to come in and to work with the city on doing what we need to do, just first off, evaluating whether or not these numbers were varying for the renovation of the building or true. Is that what it's going to take? Obviously there's some number that you'd say it's not worth investing in the building to restore it. I don't know what that number is, but certainly want to find that out. What's it going to take to bring the building up to code? And then what sort of modifications could be made to use the building as it's intended as a brewery? Now, the port has limitations in terms of its statutory authority. We really can't do commercial type of development, but we can do industrial and the brewery is considered manufacturing use, so fall under the statute. So it's kind of a unique thing in terms of our ability to work with them. It's the same with boat developer. I think, I, I like the concept of the Sandy River Boat Works. I think that's something that necessarily doesn't have to be in that building, it could be in that building, but, you know, the port wants to work with, with Christopher Williams and see if we can get that business into town too. We have other locations, we can do that. They need to have the boats displayed on Wanapa. We can figure out a way to do that as well. So what we'd like to do is to work with the city and try to figure out how we can make this Thunder Island Brewery happen. It seems like it's a good use of that property. We don't know yet about the terms, how we work those out, but we're certainly open to, you know, suggestions. We don't consider this as cutting a fat hog. We don't see it as, as raising the value of our property. We've already committed a lot of our other property, our tweak property. So we just see this as, it's, it's a need that the community has for more development or more cash. So we just see this as, it's, it's a need that the community has for more development, for more cash registers downtown. We don't get the type of people that they, they are that come to our community and are looking to do something. And this is an opportunity to do something. So we, we, we've been talking about how we could, you know, try to figure out a way to make this, this happen. It certainly means not a return for the city for probably a period of time, not a return for the port for a period of time. But I think the, the fact that, I think it was mentioned by the realtor, kind of, kind of ports is that you need to get somebody to invest in the building to, to get it to where you can show it. And then who's going to do that? Who's going to be the first party to step in? And this is our community. The ports, you know, the port looks at any investment we make in our community is a good investment. So we don't have the same criteria that outside investors would have, that they, they need a return on investment. The port can, can capture that over time. They just, the uplifting of the whole economic base is why we're here. So I think there's some opportunities for us to, to kind of work through this development of, of the property and work in collaboration on the project that we both can work on.
Gail? Just as a general, just so I can get my head around it. If there was an agreement today to pursue the idea of working with the port or the purpose of the group, what's the elapsed time that you would guess that would take?
To do an agreement?
No, to finish the project and get them in business and...
They want to be in business by, I think it's next year, spring of next year. Is that what we're talking about? So, you know, there's a short timeframe here. We have to, they'd want some sort of commitment that they, that they can use to go out and raise the money that they need to be able to, to take the working capital and the equipment that they need. So we'd have, you know, maybe sixty, ninety days, I'd assume at the most, to be able to work out some sort of agreement that would give them the ability to go forward. And then, and so, I've been trying to think through this in terms of worst-case scenarios and that sort of thing. And there's nothing precluding us too from, I mean, we, we need a broker. We need a real estate broker. And this is maybe the gentleman that we work with in terms of, of our properties as well. We're just thinking that this is an opportunity right now to, we have, we have somebody here and we have a pretty substantial business plan. So, so what we need to, we haven't got it all figured out yet, but it seems like there's enough pieces there if we could kind of cobble an agreement together. Then I'd say, when, when would the city expect to maybe get a return on the, the land and the building? I'd say three to five years. I could say that would probably be a reasonable time. They're looking for some sort of ability to, to purchase the property at some point in the future. I think the value is only negotiation at that point. And certainly seems if their business comes in as successful, that the property would be worth more than it is now. That's all things that could be negotiated. And so...
The reason I ask that, because I don't know exactly how much time we have left to pay off that loan.
Seven years.
Seven years? And just from the marketing analysis that was provided, you know, I mean, it's at least a, a year. Even the best practices, I think, before a sale could be accomplished. And so I'm kind, kind of losing my own optimism of, of trying to convert that into a lump sum payout.
So you've got one, you've got one proposal here that does that? Otherwise you're listed with a broker and let him try to do it himself.
But, but let's not confuse the, the issue of paying off the loan with the development of the project. Because currently, the city's policy is to make payments on a monthly basis that will achieve paying off the, the loan at the end of seven years regardless of any sale or development that, that could or could not happen. So, so currently we have a policy to, to make those payments. So let's not say that we're, we're putting all our eggs in the basket of, of development, because that's not the case. You know, certainly if we could develop the property in three years, sell it, and then for the last four years of the loan, not have to make those payments because we've sold it and paid off the loan, then that, that would be a benefit to the city. But it, it's not as if this is required to get the loan paid off. So I just want to make, I know you understand that. I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
They've just been tied together for so long as far as the sale as a reimbursement. In the meantime, we're, we have the burden of making the payments.
We do, yeah.
And so that's where I was looking for some general, but I, I'm, if it's a year, year and a half, then that's, that's good news.
So Chuck, we've got a couple other questions here, but you've talked in sort of generalities about what the agreement might be, but you've also said you've had discussions about this. So I'm just, I mean, you, you say if the city doesn't have any return for three to five years, are you talking about return in the sense of, of, of selling the property to, to, you know, someone's going to buy it? Or are you talking about return in terms of anything? Because one of the proposals, the Thunder Island Brewery proposal, has a lease or rent payment as part of it. And, and my question is just, how does the port being the developer and paying for potential improvements play into the, the concept of the city being the owner and therefore the landlord? Have you worked out those details?
No, no, I just assumed that the port would be reimbursed for its pocket expenses for the renovations to the building and that the city would have the long-term lease. The lease would be with the company. And, and so however we work those details out, then when the building, when the building is sold, you know, either if the port has been reimbursed yet for its, its valuation or its investment, then the city will keep all the money for the sale of, of the building.
So what you're talking about...
We haven't worked out those details yet in terms of the timing of the cash flows. So who, who gets what percentage of what money does they command? But that's certainly, you know, the detail that could be negotiated.
It, it sounds to me though like you're suggesting that the city go into debt to the port.
Well, and again...
For whatever the cost of the renovations is.
Yeah, we have, we have to work out whatever that agreement is. And so I'm not, I'm not assuming that there'd be a payment to the port from operations that, that any payment to the port would have to come from future revenues from the building or the eventual sale of the building. So it's, you know, I, I, so I, I guess there's, there's a couple ways you could look at that. You could say that you're, you know, that you're, you're getting a hundred fifty, or whatever the number is, whatever the investment is, you're getting that much further behind in terms of what you owe on the building that that could be hit up. That's certainly one way of looking at it. And another way of looking at it is, what's that going to do if we bring the building up to a marketable, you know, the building's showable, where you can actually, it's a turnkey operation. Somebody could come in and purchase it right away. So I guess that's, that's kind of the trade-off that we're proposing.
Have you talked to the, have you had their main discussions at the port commission? About the concept of, of the city going into debt to the port for the cost of the renovations?
Not that, not, that's not the way of characterizing it, but no, we haven't had a discussion. What we've talked about just generally with, with the president of the board, the vice president of the board, is working out some sort of agreement with the city that would allow for the quickest path to development of, of the property. That's what we're looking at is, how do we do that? So, so does the city, the quickest way of doing it is you either take the proposal you've got for the sale and take over from that. That's the only one. Or, or list it with a broker, or, or with the port and try to figure out how we can, how we can get, get more value in the building so it meets market needs.
So it's not something that we know for sure that we can do in support?
No, we'd have, we'd have to talk through it. Like I said, I think it would take some time for us to work out some sort of agreement.
But you also mentioned sixty to ninety days to have an agreement for this.
Yeah, I think it's reasonable given the, the brewery's desire. And, and that's, this is what I think we're excited about, is the fact that there's a potential tenant for the building. And it's a good, it's a good tenant and it's, it's, it's an up, it's a startup company, but they've got a, they've got a pretty, a pretty good plan. There's been a lot of success. Walking Man Brewery, Full Sail Hill, Double Mountain. I mean, there's just, they go on and on and on, but the, this market has, has a lot of potential. And we don't have one here. And it's certainly going to be a good fit. It, 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 it's, it's tied into the, the recent Cascade Locks proposal. We're talking about what sort of development we want to have in Cascade Locks. A brew pub is one of the highest, one of the highest things on the list of, the community has listed the things that we'd like to see happen. So here's an opportunity to make something happen. We work in cooperation with the city and figure out a way that we could get the development to happen in there. And I don't, I don't know all the details. I mean, in our board, I don't know if our board's going to ultimately, you know, agree, but I think we certainly, it seems like something to talk about.
Chuck?
You asked one of my questions, which was just the port on port for this, but you, Chuck, you always refer to we. And who is we when you say we are excited about this? Is that just the port or you and...
Port staff initially, yeah. Because that's, we, we start, we look at the, as a group and we say, wow, what a great fit. How can we make this happen? We've talked about building a building, a new building. We've talked about putting them in one of our existing, you know, our existing industrial buildings. But, you know, they want to be on Wanapa. They want to be in the Fire Hall. So the Fire Hall has value. And so we see it as, as taking it to the, you know, the end. We're not getting into the detail of how we get there, but where we end up. That's, that's what we're excited about, is that we have a potential for a new restaurant with a brew pub that is a signature attraction for the community. And it seems like we want to try to get there.
What do you think?
Do you want to follow up?
What do you think the flavor of the commission is for that? I mean, pro, you think they're going to go for it, not go for it?
They need to know more details. They want to know about what the, what the IGA is and, and what sort of...
How long do you think it's going to take to craft that and get them the details and get us the details?
Well, I think, I think we're talking about, we have to go through a process of negotiation and talk about how we, how we get there. Whether it's protected for sixty...
Give me a time frame. Just partially, nine, sixty days?
Sixty, seventy days.
Mark?
Yeah, the, you know, I think the people, you know, people want to, we've been to the, the meetings and, and, you know, that was sort of the number one, you know, everyone agreed that the, the brew pub. But the, the financing, you know, if, if the payments were made for the Fire Hall and, you know, maybe we did a lease option where, you know, we look at the value, you know, three, four years down the road. Well, then, you know, if, if the economy is better, hopefully it'll be better, then it, it would be worth more. And so, you know, we would pay off the port and, and then, you know, they would buy it from us and, I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of ifs and, and, but I think if we really want it, you know, if the, if this is a good work for us, well, then I think, you know, we should take serious, you know, this proposal, so.
So, well, I did it, a very similar deal with the port with the, and it was with the city with the group. And in that case, we supplied the land and the city came up and did the improvements in the land. And since the city was out the cash initially, we took all the revenues that came from the investment and paid back the city. And then I think the agreement's just about expired from ten years. And then after, after the initial investment was made, then, then the port was able to get a return on the lease revenue from the investment of, of their investment of the land and the building. It doesn't have to be that way here, but that was how we had crafted it there. So, so it's just a question of how we, how we figure out how much, what's a reasonable amount of revenue to, to charge. What's, I mean, they've got a proposal here. They have a number in terms of their business plan that, you know, I think you could have the building reappraised at, at a time in the future. I mean, everything's negotiable and so...
Well, I was just going to say on the, on the loan that we talked to the Fire Hall. We were talking about seven years left and I think we haven't done, we weren't paying on the thing until last year. I think we set up a ten-year limitation on it, so. So we're three years short of our standard. We have to get this thing done in, in, in ten years. All we have to have our, you know, we're paying on it. That's what we're going to...
No, that's not right. It's, it'll, according to the amber days, it'll be paid off in seven.
Okay, I thought it was a ten-year...
I just checked the period. Ten years from the point of the loan.
Is what she said?
The loan happened three years ago, so you've got seven.
Tell me, haven't paid on it?
So you have seven left from when you started figuring out the payments.
Well, the payment's set up for ten years. At that point, we hadn't paid on it until last year. We could fully start paying on it.
It's going to be paid off in seven years though?
It's going to be paid off in seven years.
It's paid off.
You can check the period.
At forty-five thousand dollars a year.
Gail? I, I, I don't, yeah, I'd like to see something like this happen, but I don't like the idea of creating another debt that we would owe for the work the port would do for the improvement.
Well, you know, and we haven't worked out the details. I'm assuming that the investment that the port would make would be at its own risk.
Would be what?
At our, at our risk. I'm assuming that. We have to figure out how to do it. But it'd be, you know, certainly we want to, we want to recover our, our investment if there was ever a liquidation of that asset.
Gail, just go ahead.
Why don't you just buy the damn land now and work out a deal with them?
Well...
Hello?
We're not making, we're not making that proposal right now. And we haven't even programmed that for budget and haven't really considered it. This, this only came up in the idea of talking about the proposal.
Could it be considered?
Well, again, you know, it, it'd have to be purchased on the basis of some sort of industrial manufacturing sort of business in there. We can talk about it. I can certainly bring it up with our board.
Okay.
It's not something we've talked about. We haven't talked, we haven't talked about this proposal in any, in any good extent.
My, my view, that's just the cleanest approach.
Here's, here's one that's maybe not so clean, but, but similar. And I'm just curious if you'd be open to the concept of we pursue an IGA along the lines of what you're talking about with the port, making improvements and assuming some risk. At the same time, we also, the city also looks at an agreement with a broker to try to sell the property. So that you've got parallel tracks. You've got improvements going on. And the broker is then, as Tyler said, pitching the idea to... So, so you, so the idea would be, look, we've got improvements in progress. You know, we've, we've got, we've looked at what improvements need to be done. We've got a tenant in place. The improvements are being done so the tenant can open for business in, in 2013. And, you know, at that point, you know, it becomes, in, in, instead of just saying to a developer, you know, here's, here's a piece of property. Here's the improvements you need to do. Here's a potential tenant that, that'll be willing to come in if you have the improvements. Then you're just, you're pitching it to, you're casting that wide net, but you're pitching it as a property that, you know, isn't going to require that initial investment.
So that's a great idea. I think, I think ours is, is, is very similar to that. It's a little, little more focused though on the brew, the brewery. And there has to be some sort of contractual commitment that we've decided that we're going to, we're going to work with the brewery. They have an option to get into that property. And that, that would, that would presuppose any additional placement of the amount, but...
But that's the tenant that we're talking about, right? That, we're talking about marketing it with that tenant. So that would be part of the, the agreement. It wouldn't just be saying, we might have a, a tenant. We'd be talking about the port's doing improvements to facilitate bringing a startup brewery to this property.
Long, long as the, as the brew pub had its agreement in place that they had an option that they could execute on it, there'd be no problem with getting another party to invest in, in the facility. I think though, if you look at it from a, from a ROI perspective, what a company's want, you know, they're going to want, they're going to want a return of their investment. So whatever, whatever they invest in the building, if you get, if you get another party that wants to buy it after the improvements are made or buy this whole package deal, they're going, they're going to want to be able to generate a return that is going to be more than I think what the brew pub is committing for a short-term period of time. That's where the port can come in as patient capital and invest in, in the facility, knowing that the payoff potentially could be down the road. We can certainly talk with a broker about how we do that. But I think the port's unique in... But I think the port's unique in that sense that we, we're not gonna require the ROI that, you know, that another investor will.
So, I just did a few calculations on my cell phone calculator. But if, if we're talking about improvements in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we're talking about a rent agreement or a lease of fifteen hundred a month, after five years of collecting that rent, you don't even get to your hundred thousand. So there's, so if, if, you know, if the city's taking that in as rent, then, you know, it, it doesn't really solve all of our problems, although it, it offsets some of our expense. But if the port's taking that fifteen hundred a month as, as a, as reimbursement for the, the improvements, after five years, we're talking about a three to five year option, you don't even get back to your.
It'd take eight years. It would take eight years applying the whole amount, maybe a little more than that if you could put a, if you put a, a discounted value on it. But again, I think.
When you throw out the number eight years, what, I mean, eight years to do what?
Amortize a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So you're jumping to a hundred fifty, yeah.
Well, I'm saying, but you're, you're getting into the detail, which we haven't even negotiated yet in terms of how the cash flow's gonna be allocated out. The, the, the idea is that they, you have this, invest this, these entrepreneurs have come in and created this tremendous value in this, in this facility. And they generated a cash flow and revenue streams and jobs and, and taxes and economic development for the community. And then, so then what's the, what's the value of that when you decide the, the option, what is the option gonna say about what's the value of that building at that point? And if they're successful, you know, there'd be more money, okay, more value of that building. If they're not successful, then what do we have? We have a building that's up to code and then they, if they, if they come in and they're unsuccessful, a startup company, and they'll say they fail in the first year. And they're gone, well, the port's got out-of-pocket expenses, there's no revenue coming in from the building. And we lease it with a broker, we go to a broker, we sign the broker up, we're in a worse lot than, than we were, that you've got a piece of property that you're gonna be marketing. And the port's gonna be, you know, kind of taking the lead, trying to get the property marketed, get another tenant, get it, get it sold. But you've got, now you've got the building up to snuff and you're able to use it.
Gail, Chuck?
So Chuck, do you fill a six-month window if we were to do the option with an IGA with the port?
Ninety days, yeah.
Let me finish my, so six months, within six months, by, you have your ninety days when you figure out the bean counting with the, the deal. And then by December, we would know if the brewery could come in and then they would, spring of two thousand thirteen, we would probably have a new, let's say, by June of two thousand thirteen, call it a year from now, we'd have an operational business in our downtown port area. Six, December, December's when we know if we can make this, if they can make it happen or not. And then after December, if it's a bust, you can't, it's on the market with the developmental approach with the developer, or running that parallel track as the mayor suggests.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd say, you know, we would put the funds, I mean, these are all details, but we necessarily put the funds into the renovation build until we could see that they had their financing in place. I mean, there's a lot of kind of things that would have to happen before we did it. And I think, and I'd say that's probably a really optimistic timetable. I mean, think how long it's taken the brigands to get where they're at, and they've had to pull lots of other funding sources together. But unless we get started, unless we get down that path, we're not gonna get there at all. So, I mean, we set the timetable and, and, and try to, try to make it as, as mean the timetable, but everything seems to take longer than we would anticipate.
Gail?
All right, I just think since this would be, you know, a tenant occupancy kind of deal, that, you know, if it works, it's great, and I hope it does. If it doesn't, then the tenants are have to change, which is the important reason why I think the ports are going to the property outright.
You're making a good case, Bill.
I'm gonna keep crying.
And I'd like to say, I, I'm just talking about what we're doing, but I.
I, I know.
Bringing that back to.
I, I hear what you're saying.
So, this is just, if I could, Dave, you, you were talking about, you know, kind of being in a holding pattern for, you know, not having any agreement in place. What, what are you looking for to, to give you that assurance that you do need to? Are you talking about the agreement between the port and the city that, that you need before you go out on the circuit and investors and using Kickstarter and so on, or?
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, you guys are meeting next week, right, to kind of make a decision on your plan and you guys make the decision to go with the port. I think that'll put huge confidence in Dan and I to turn around and start.
Well, we meet every week. Yeah, yeah, and I think I can see, is our, our discussion, whether we give the option to pursue that or not, you only have a wait until next week. But I don't know.
And there's also the, the port itself, we have to go and present to the port as well, another option, so.
Yeah?
I've got another question for him. Have you been here in the winter?
Uh, I've been in Portland in the winter and I.
No.
Come out to the gorge once a week.
Have you been in Cascade Locks in January?
I mean, I, I run tours year-round all the way to the horse tail fall, so I, I'm very familiar with the seasons coming out here, you know, weekly.
I mean, I, I'm just, you know, it's not like it's, our location is conducive to businesses in the winter. And I hope you've taken that into account.
Beer drinking during the winter actually.
Yeah.
The price per pint goes up, so it's, you know, and it's, it's not like we don't have a two-million-person market, you know, just down the road.
Walking Man's doing quite well.
And what?
Stevenson, Walking Man Brewery is doing quite well in Stevenson all year long.
And the port, the Hood River's opening another one too, down, down on the port.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's the same as Cascade Locks.
Well, the ice beer.
Well, they wouldn't have to go to the river to get their brew.
Right, right. Put roadblock up and keep.
Maybe try to get some signs up on the freeway or create a traffic jam, you know, or something to get them in here.
Well, there'll be an ice storm between here and the river.
Just need some tags on the freeway.
We can arrange that three times a year.
Now, Hood Meadows markets for this road to get to, to come up thirty-five instead of twenty-six, so in the wintertime, there's a lot of people going over down this road, they're going skiing and, and skiers like.
Oh, I missed that day.
Skiers like beer. You missed that day? We're on that freeway in June, right? It's amazing how many people are on that freeway.
Walking, Walking Man across the river has rated the top fifteen brew pubs of the Northwest, you know, and they're, they're on the side of the river that's harder to get to, you know, so. You know, we're one step closer.
Okay.
It's definitely possible.
Any other questions for Chuck?
Any comment? I, I guess I'm with Gail, I'd, I'd love to sell the thing, but we've had it kind of on the market for four or five years and, you know, we've got one offer that is, and I believe is, is pretty much an empty storefront compared to a brew pub. But I'd like to see a brew pub kind of thing. I think there's a risk, there's a huge risk in an upstart business. But to counter that, I think if we could put the value in three to five years, if they're successful, we'll get more out of the property than if we just sold it, you know, at a price today, so.
And then, and then if they're not, we're both in this together, essentially. We're, we're in it too. We've got, we've got skin in the game too.
So just to, just to clarify that, though, it actually hasn't been on the market. Two, two years ago, we tried to put it on the market, but we had, you know, council members that decided they didn't want that. So it has not actually been listed. And we've still had offers.
You're right though, Chuck, I think if, if we get the brew pub in here, just to get the, the customers and when they come in and see the town, there'll be other businesses maybe that, you know, just the exposure, you know, that.
We need more things for people to do in there. This is a bit by bit, so we can always find reasons not to do stuff. Unless they can find some reason to do something, you know, we're, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. So the next item on our agenda is public comments, and we did not have anyone sign up for public comments, so we'll turn it all to mayor and council comments. And I'm gonna suggest that we direct our attention to the, the staff report. On the first page, there's council options, here's the presentation, do nothing, and so on. And also the second page, which represents staff recommendations, all three of which involve working with the port on various different levels. So if we could just kind of go through and, and direct our comments towards those two items. City council options from the front page, and if you, if you like the option of working with the port, then focus in on the three recommendations on the back page and say which of those you like. So, here in the presentation, do nothing, we've heard the presentations, do we want to do nothing, or do we want to direct that one of the options be pursued? Hire a broker and sell the property, skipping the development ideas. An IGA with the port involving all of the three options or some other option. Start with you, Jeff.
Well, I, I think entering an agreement with the port, or an IGA on number four. You have the one recommendation is direct the port, work with interested parties with that developmental approach, but the other, the other part of that is run that parallel track with the developer. So you have not only them going down the track of getting the brew pub as the option and developing that property and moving it forward, but then have option B sitting out here of having the, the developer work with their properties and also this one, if they had a, somebody that wanted to come in and buy it and work with our, with the whiskey, or excuse me, with the Thunder Island Brewery. That's what my support would be.
So it's, it's IGA with the port, work with interested parties, but at the same time, pursue the option of hiring a broker and listing the property?
Yes.
Randy?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd agree with that, but we have a broker here, is it, I mean, is that something that brokers do? You know, we're trying to, we're trying to work a deal, but if you guys can come up with something better.
Yeah, I work for free all the time. No, yeah, absolutely. I think that it's probably something, talking with Chuck and the port on a grander scale, and maybe it's, either they've got the piece of land next door that I know we've got things working on, but they're not done as I understand it. So maybe it's, you know, bringing the land in conjunction with the building to the market, a general offering and, and see what we can shake loose during that time and present the P as they come up, while we're combining seeds to, to make this happen. And as I understand it, December would be kind of a timeframe, knowing whether or not it's gonna take off and pursue in the Thunder Island direction or if we need to outright try to sell the property. It doesn't hurt to, you know, bring it to the market and pursue that avenue and see what, see what shakes loose, I don't think that that's a problem.
So, parallel track makes, makes sense to move, move things along.
Brad?
Likewise, I think that's a good idea. I think, you know, they might be able to get somebody to come in that could do, sell the parking lot and do valet parking and or pay parking for the brew pub. It's gonna be busy.
Okay, is that, hey, was that a pie in the sky idea? Gail? Think of a pie in the sky?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I'm changing my position a little bit. I do support the potential IGA with the port for the brew, brew pub, parallel to the sale. But, but on, I'd really like to stick, you know, if it's discussed, potentially the IGA could be completed in ninety days, I'd like to stick to the ninety days. And the other thing I'd like as a part of that is the idea of them purchasing the property outright and let them work their own deal.
That could be the IGA, is that they're purchasing.
That, that's what I mean, not just the, the development, but purchase.
I guess, I mean, just kind of along the sixty to ninety days was the, was the quote. I would actually lean closer to sixty days, because if we're gonna start working in the property, gosh, wouldn't it be nice to have people here in August? Yeah. You know, be. My hope is sixty-two is the. Sixty-two days? Sixty days, true, that's my hope is.
Also.
Put the, put the pedal to the metal a little bit here and put the screws down, so we don't drag this out, let's, let's get something going.
Because if there are any renovations that need to be done, the sooner the better, because we have our good weather window, you know, looming down upon us.
Mark?
I agree with four, the IGA with the port, let the port, you know, handle the improvements and, you know, I like the idea. And also, you know, that would be the seed and, and maybe we'll see other businesses too come off that, so.
Tom?
Okay. So I, I definitely, I mean, I don't wanna pave over the concept that, that the Cedar Group, uh, of looking at a full development of that whole section of downtown. I think that's one of the proposals that could be considered as part of the, the parallel track. I don't think it has to be just a listing with a broker. I think it, looking at that, that concept, it really does bring a lot more value to the, to the community as well as an investment in some, you know, a startup business that, you know, is bringing their passion to our town. It's an opportunity for us to back that up by providing more opportunity for economic development, which would have that synergistic effect of, of business growth as well as, you know, potentially providing more, even more opportunities for the community as well as our, our businesses, so. Having said that, I think that the, the concept of having a parallel track of work, an IGA with the port as well as a, a listing of a property by the end of the summer is, is something I'm also interested in pursuing, so. Paul, I, I trust that you've, you've understood that, that idea listed as the parallel track.
Yes.
And that is the consensus of our council. So unless there's an objection, I haven't heard one, that'll be the direction that we give to you by consensus. So we'll pursue, you know, we'll continue to talk with the port. I think it's, it's only fitting that we respect the commission to, to hear some ideas and make up their own minds about whether or not they want to enter into that type of agreement. But it also gives us the flexibility of, if we don't ultimately work something out with the port, we, we still have a plan in place. So, you know, we've, we've, we have a track record of, over the last six months of continued and growing cooperation with the port. So let's hope that this is, is well received.
So the court commission is meeting Thursday night, I'm on their agenda for the museum issue, so I'm sure that this will be on there. And so we should be able to report next Monday night what they're willing to go on with. Should, should they be there?
Sure.
Didn't you say you were gonna do a presentation for it?
They should if they want to be.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah.
Other council comments? Gail?
And so, after the sixty days, we should be getting a final review, presentation or discussion on the tentative IGA agreement?
I would think at least by sixty days, you should see the first. Hopefully we can.
And hopefully, next time they'll bring some samples of the product.
Tom?
Yeah, just, not with this, but I got the Scamania County Pioneer, and they did an article on the CEO Council of Brews Free Increase Despite Charter. And I just want to kind of head off one of the statements that made that was inaccurate. It, it said, Council, Councilor Tom Cranwell voted for the increased fees, though warned the matter could be contested by citizens under the charter stipulation that fee increases go to public vote. And in fact, I didn't vote for the, the fee increases, I was the one who, who voted not for the fee increases. So I just wanted to get that off to the, the public. voted not for the fee increases. So I just wanted to get that out to the, the public that, uh, there is an error on the Scamane Pioneer on their, on their, um, and I'm, I'll be talking to the world about, about that here. So I'm sure they'll be putting a retraction on it. That's it for me.
Oh, okay. And just also, it's, it's worth pointing out that the other, uh, error of omission in that article was that, uh, they didn't include that the, the fee increases were for two years. So that after two years, they revert back to the existing fees. That was lost in the shuffle. And I think it's important, if, in the interest of accuracy, that that be expressed as well, so. The other thing that I don't think we've talked about, it's as the focus of this meeting, is the five oh five Wanapah property, um, is the offer that we've had from the Sandy, Sandy River Boat Works. So I, I would just ask that, um, that maybe we give some direction to staff as to how to, how to pursue that. Just say, no, we're not interested, or say, we'd like, you know, work with the port, or counter offer for some other figure. I think that, I mean, if there's an offer, I think that we, we should at least respond.
I have them work through the port, that developmental, cause Chuck kinda touched on that a little bit and the broker also, that dual approach to the fire hall, maybe some other businesses to help bring that in there. Cause I think it's a valued business and it values what, some of the activities that Recreation Destination is that we, we're, we're marketing for ourselves here, or is that the, the boating, the sailing? And so that ties in. So maybe the port can find, provide properties for them and direct staff to do that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Likewise.
I guess.
Agree with that.
All right, yeah. And if the port's interested in building, I mean, they're doing spec buildings. Maybe they're interested in building a, a, um, a spec building for a boat company. So we'll carry that too. Okay? Anything else? Okay, next item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion? So moved. Next second. Okay, there's a motion and a second by Jeff and then Gail. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, tension, motion carries.
Thank you, Ralph.